Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Lot?
Here.
All present but Mr. Moore.
Okay. And may we have the invocation by Mr. Johnson?
Oh, stand. Heavenly Father, I come at this hour just giving thanks to thee, because thou have been so good to me, now only me, each and every one that's undersigning my voice. Ye have blessed us all individually and collectively, and thus enough to say thank you, sir. Father, ask that ye guide our hearts and our minds this evening as we try and take care of the business at hand. Let us all be on one accord, and whatever we do here tonight, please let it be pleasing to thee, and decent and in order. These are all blessings we thank in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Shaw, would you just pledge first?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. Announcements. The city, the city of Bastrop will hold an open meeting on June 12th at 6:00 P.M. in the City Hall courtroom located at 202 East Jefferson Avenue, Bastrop, Louisiana, to adopt the mileage rates for 214. This mileage rates will be the same as last year or the year before, but we're not changing the mileage rates. They will be the same, but I think the new law says we have to have a open meeting only now. Also, the week of May 12th through the 16th is National Police Week. And there is a candlelight service scheduled for 6:30 P.M. Is it here or at St. Joseph?
At 6:30, City Hall.
At City Hall, okay. Thank you, Chief. Everyone is invited. Are there any public comments as related to items on the agenda? Yes, ma'am. State your name and...
All right, Cindy Hendricks. And I need my address.
Yes, please.
10056 Lynch Lane, Bastrop. And I'm gonna try not to rattle on. I thought about this, so I thought it was important that you know this, and I'm gonna talk about item number 11. It's gonna be an ordinance, and it's talking about the zoning. And I wanted to express how important that this is. You know, we have an organization called Keep More House Beautiful, and I didn't know how many of you that was on the council really realized how that actually got started. When we had the meal, there was a lady by the name of Latonya Johnson, who also served on the Chamber of Commerce when I did. And we used to meet, what we called was a little vision group, to try and do things to bring the community together. And we had the superintendent of schools, we had the economic development leader, we had the Chamber of Commerce, the mayor was present there. We had someone that represented the police jury. And so, we all kinda got together to think of a way that we can help our community, because we really didn't know what was gonna happen to the meal. Well, Latonya was telling us about an interview that was supposed to take place one day, and she said what happened was the lady was coming to interview, and she came a day early, and she never showed for her interview. And the reason was, when she called back, she says, you know, what happened? She says, well, I thought I would come a day early. She said, so when I came through Bastrop, I looked and I left. That's how that we began to think about the appearance and the economic value of what is presented in our town. So, just with an interview, we had someone that left because of what they saw. And Ms. Kay King is gonna also talk about how important zoning is and the economic value of that. So, what I wanted to reiterate is the idea, we've got to keep our main corridors in shape. We also need to keep Marable, which goes to the high school that has lots of teams that travel back and forth for all the athletic activities. These are first impressions of our community. It's also about just the businesses that are already located here and what that means. So, I wanted you to take into account, it was called the Beautification Committee, and we did that for about two years, and then we applied for the Keep More House Beautiful. So, with the Keep More House Beautiful, we've been able to get volunteers that has helped in cleanups, things that we never had before. You know, we put little cigarette bins out, we've helped with the park, and all of that has to do with volunteer efforts. And I still think that doing something like the zoning, the Keep More House Beautiful, is something from a child to a grownup can participate in. So, as a forefront or for y'all, I hope that y'all would consider how important these two issues are, because it is very important for first impressions, and it's very important to keep the businesses that we have at a decent value. So, that's really all I have to say, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Approval of previous minutes. There's a regular meeting April 10th, and a special meeting April 22nd. First, a regular meeting April 10th.
I move that we approve the minutes.
A second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passed. A special meeting April 22nd.
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the special meeting? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Financial committee report. Mr. Shaw?
Mayor, I move that we accept the bills and claims for the month of April. We approve that.
A second.
We got a motion, Mr. Shaw, and second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Resolution 141557, commending Elizabeth Freeman upon retirement at City Court. And they tell me Ms. Freeman couldn't be here. But we do have a resolution commending her for her 20-some years with the city, and we will give it to her, we'll give, she's already been, I think the council gonna sign it, and it's commending her for her 20, around 28 years, I believe, of service as City Sheriff. She served under four mayors. Can I get a motion to her on the resolution?
I move that we grant it, Mayor.
A second.
We got a motion and a second on the resolution. That's Resolution 141557. All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Ordinance 144223, and ordinance amending in part Ordinance 3090 of the 1981, providing for a new schedule of sewer rates, an effective date, and that all ordinance and our resolution in conflict with this new rates herein be repealed, and provided for other matters in connection thereof. Ms. Goldman, would you like to explain this?
We, we needed to do some additional works on our sewer system. We found that our rates were a lot lower. We're gonna have to have a way of financing these projects. And so, we asked, we introduced this last month, and so, we asked that y'all consider adopting it so that we can move forward to the project where we're gonna try to move the treatment plant, or try to do some more work at the treatment plant. Hopefully, we eliminate some of the smelling on. So, we would like for y'all to consider adopting this.
I make that motion?
A second.
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All for?
Ah.
Against? Motion passes. Ms. Kay King?
Thank you, Mayor and Board of Alderman. And I only have about 35 slides off. I mean, five slides here tonight, so I thought I would wake you up there. But I'm gonna talk about, really, on the agenda that says zoning and investment, and that is really the topic. And I'm gonna cover three things. What, what people ask me about zoning when they come into Bastrop, and attracting the kind of investment that we wanna attract, and the purpose of zoning. And... Are you gonna, are you gonna do that for me? Okay. People always say, what is the zoning of this property? And when you have a retail prospect come in, you know, and, and before we had any kind of zoning ordinance, and you'd say, well, we don't have any zoning. Well, it wasn't, it wasn't a sign of relief, as you might think, that, well, we don't have to go through some elaborate process, but there was always a look of concern, because in many cases, these companies make huge investments. And I'm gonna talk about the, probably the number one question that people ask me in the community is how do we get new restaurants and, and chain restaurants to locate in Bastrop? So, I wanted, I looked this up on the internet, I've got it referenced. You can find all kinds of things on the internet. But these are typical total investments, that a Denny's requires 1.1 to 2.6 million dollars to put in a Denny's. Now, that's building, land, training, the whole, the whole package. A CC's Pizza, 350,000 to 625,000. Golden Corral, which is real popular in some areas, 2.1 to 5.7 million. And I'm, I'm just gonna skip on down here, Applebee's, which I get asked a lot, 2 to 7 million dollars to put in an Applebee's. And even a Church's Chicken franchise, they, it didn't say how much it cost, but a person had to have a net worth of 1.5 million to put in a Church's Chicken. So, these are not investments that people make lightly. And when they come into a community, they can see what's there, and that's why the grandfather clause is very important too, because people get to leave what is there when we adopt zoning. But what's frightening to an investor that's making this kind of investment is what might be there if I'm not protected with any kind of zoning ordinances. And I think that it was very important when the city of Bastrop adopted this. But unfortunately, in that zoning ordinance, I mean, to the next one, it was really vague about the mobile homes, modular homes, containers, FEMA trailers. It wasn't really clearly defined. In fact, my impression of this from the people that came in to do this was that they really thought that mobile homes should be in a mobile home park. And they made very little reference to how mobile homes essentially left a lot of undefined criteria about where people could place mobile homes. And we, you know, when we understand that we've had years of a town that just kinda grew around a paper mill. So, we understand that we have to use some logic in, in the way we approach this. But because these things were not clearly defined, it just kinda leaves it open. And I'd like to see more done to, to kinda specify this, but we're not gonna go there tonight, because I think that mobile homes have a very valuable purpose in, in promoting homeownerships in areas that have lots of vacant lots. And I think that the mobile homes can, and manufactured homes, can be an important part of the redevelopment of many subdivisions. But what I wanna say is that maybe not out on our primary corridors, because that's gonna be the place where commercial investment is, is gonna look to go. And that's what's really gonna, to determine if they come on the appearance of our primary corridors. And I, and I don't know if that is, oh, I left off. My main problem with mobile homes is they have wheels. And when, and if they don't have wheels, they can be put back on. And what happens with mobile homes is... Let's see if I do the right one. That, this is an actual ad from this past weekend off of Craigslist. I'm not gonna tell anybody where it's at, 'cause I don't want them to go get it, but it's not that far from here. And it says, a 12 by 60 mobile home, great for camp, free. Now, it's a 16 by 60 mobile home. It's been our camp for the last few years on the lake. It would make a great camp if anyone wants it, needs some TLC. I just have to get it moved. I don't care if you scrap it or move it to another site. I just need it gone before my new mobile home arrives. And mobile homes are sometimes what people can afford, but mobile homes are not the same as a conventionally constructed house. They have a title, and that's a good indication that they're not the same. And you can immobilize them and de-immobilize them, and there's lots of legal aspects in there that allows people to file homestead exemption. But ultimately, what I've seen through my life is that people will find something that's free, and they think they can move it, they're gonna fix it up, they're gonna either live in it, or they think they can rent it out. And sometimes it, this really doesn't look that bad in this picture, but what's it gonna look like when they move it 50 miles down the road? And so, people get these, they realize when it gets there, it might have damage. And in many cases, in many areas of our city, we see a lot of dilapidated structures of all types, but many of them are mobile homes that people have just abandoned. And I would like to see some additional thought given to how we treat mobile homes in the community, at least to give people in neighborhoods a chance to express what they believe. Because we, we need to approach this with some common sense, but we need to understand and be aware that many people think that zoning takes away rights, but it's not. It's an exchange of rights. That the same right that you have to ensure that you have quality of life, protection of your investment, and, you know, just something incompatible may be locating right next to your home, it's exchanged because that person that has that lot or home next to you has that same protection. So, it's really not an infringement of rights. It's an equal swap involved here. And I think that Keep More House Beautiful has, I haven't, I'm not directly involved with that organization, but they've done a wonderful job of taking down derelict structures on our primary corridors. They've raised money through private donations, and they've presented homeowners or property owners with matching funds for different types of grants to, to improve the appearance of our community. I get comments all the time about how great Bastrop is looking. And I'd hate to see us kind of go backwards here and, and begin to slide back into, to situations where we might get derelict structures to replace derelict structures that, once we're there. It's not that every mobile home is gonna be bad, but then you get into a situation, well, I like the way your mobile home looks, but I don't particularly care for yours. And like I said, it's got a place, but not on our primary corridors and our commercial corridors. And we need to just stay the course and be patient, and, and try to continue to get investment in the community and protect that investment. And thank you, and are there any comments?
Quick comment. Besides this challenge we have of getting a zoning, you know, straightened out or whatever, ever what modification we gonna make, what other, what other opportunities are we having to get a nice restaurant in Bastrop?
Well...
What are we doing to reach out and touch? I know, and I'm asking this because of, I want your ideas, you know, 'cause we're trying to figure out how to do that, and we having some problems of getting people in here. But what do we need to do to really speed that up?
We need to work on the demographics and sure, you know, population and demographics, determine what restaurants will, you know, where restaurants will locate, and I'm saying I don't know that we're there yet, but we kinda have to show that we're reversing that trend of outflow of population. I have a gentleman that has a lot out on East Madison that is in Arizona, and he calls me constantly for ideas on, on, on that lot. And I've suggested all kinds of restaurants for that, that particular lot. And, you know, the thing about market research, that if you have a company that comes, they're gonna do their market research. There are people looking at us all the time. You just don't know they're looking at us. Sometimes I don't know they're looking at us. I'll be contacted by a real estate agent or someone, if, probably if they get in a bind, then they can't find exactly what they're looking for. But they're looking for places that they can make money, and they're looking for places that are positive. And, and I tell people all the time, the product that we have to sell is the future. And, and that's, and that's what we, we have to focus on. And it's not gonna happen overnight, but then, like I said, we just have to stay the course. And, and I truly believe, I know my glass is usually half-full, but I truly believe that it will come to Bastrop. We just have to stay the course and, and continue to promote the community and do some of the things that I know you've been involved with, Mr. Shaw. You know, I know that you've been actively out talking with people and trying to, you know, encourage that kind of investment in our community. We have some good restaurants here now. We just eat at them all the time, and we, we get tired. And so, we have to understand that we...
I wasn't implying that we don't have some good ones, but I think we, we could always have another choice. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and, and good choices and good selection keeps people coming into Bastrop. And that's something else that we need to do, is make sure that Bastrop is a destination, and we keep, keep those people coming in, into Bastrop with activities. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Resolution 141564. A resolution authorizes entry into agreement with Vantage Health Plan Incorporated through execution of the Vantage Master Group contract to provide health insurance coverage determined by enrollees' eligibility and selection, and provide, providing for other matters in connection thereof, thereof with Ms. Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins is actually our health consultant.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the mayor and the board for giving me the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about our healthcare renewal, just a little bit about where we been, where we currently are, and possibly what we're facing in the future. Couple years ago, we, we'd been with Vantage. Couple years ago, we were in a situation where no other major carrier would even quote our group, just due to the overall claims experience. We had some serious situations going on within the group, and sometimes when you're not looking very favorable, insurance carriers will not, you know, offer your proposal. So, that's where we were a couple years ago. Last year, we had one major carrier that did offer a quote compared with Vantage. Vantage still came out to be the, the better carrier. Every year the process is, I go out, I put it out there to quote, I gather the full quotes, I come back, meet with the mayor, Ms. Sandra, we go through them, and we just kinda, you know, look at what's gonna be best for the employees. This year, we actually were looking better as a group, as a whole. We had two of the major carriers who did quote our group this year. Unfortunately, when we got the proposals back, they were not comparable to what we currently had with Vantage. Again, the mayor and I and Ms. Sandra sat down, and we looked at all of that in detail, you know, benefits, pricing, and all of that. So, again, our renewal with Vantage has come up to be effective on July 1st. We're looking at about a 9.8% increase on the health insurance. 4% of that is due to the Affordable Care Act fees. I'm sure everybody's heard of the Affordable Care Act. We're starting to really feel some, some of the backlash, I think of, of, if that's a good word, of what's, what's happening with that. Groups are starting to feel the Affordable Care Act, the effects of it. What happens is every month on top of our premium, when, right now, for instance, we're paying about, every month, the city's paying about $1,400 in Affordable Care Act fees. Starting July 1st, those fees are going up to 3,000, so they doubled. What's frightening to me about that situation is we've got a double increase on our Affordable Care Act fees, and there really hasn't been any utilization with the Affordable Care Act yet. Individuals were required to have insurance January the 1st. So, when we get ready to look at this again and renew for next year, we're gonna have a full year of utilization that insurance carriers will have had with those individuals that have the insurance plans now. So, with us getting, with those fees doubling without that utilization, I'm really frightened it's kinda where we're headed. I think we're, everybody, as far as employer group, insurance plans, it's gonna be a rough, maybe one or two years ahead. I, I just feel that. Again, I was, I was very concerned about those Affordable Care Act fees, and that's with every carrier, there's just no way around that. With the Affordable Care Act, you've got some good things, you've got some bad things, I think just like with anything else. Individuals are getting health insurance that have not had it ever in their lives, but on the other hand, employer groups are helping to offset the cost of that whole implementation in that act. So, about 4% of our increase was just due to Affordable Care Act fees. We always have a couple conditions going on within the group. You always have about 20% of your, of your people making up 80% of your cost. That's with any group, and that's, that's pretty typical. But as a whole, we were healthier this year, where we were able to go out and get more proposals. One of the things that we're doing within the group is we have a few challenges going on to try to just make our group healthier, more attractive. The, the employees right now are doing a weight loss challenge. Some of the employees are also participating in a tobacco cessation program. They're trying to quit their tobacco usage. All of these things are free to the employees. They're, they're given different things to help them with their progress. With the weight loss program, we've been doing it, I think for about two months now. The employees were weighed and taped beforehand, and they're weighing bi-weekly. The person that has the largest percentage in weight loss gets a prize every two weeks, so we're trying to keep them incentivized to stay healthier. And I think they've really caught on. You may see them walking around the square and everything. So, we're doing things within the group to try to keep healthy. But insurance, right now, is, has just been turned upside down, you know, as a whole. So, with that being said, we are looking at a 9.8%... So, with that being said, we are looking at a nine point eight percent increase. We did have two other quotes, we compare that too, they just were not comparable to where we are right now. So, we're continuing with Vantage for the health insurance, it looks, it looks to be the most attractive quote. Our dental and vision rates did not go up, our benefits did not change, so there's, there's no increase, no changes there, so we're okay there. Going forward, I think we just have to try to keep, keep our employees healthier with the weight loss, with the tobacco usage and things like that, to keep, continue to make ourselves attractive. And hopefully, next year, when we put it out to close, maybe we'll find something more, you know, more attractive, because we're always looking for ways to improve our benefits and decrease our costs. So, with that being said, we'll just continue to, again, working with the employees, trying to get healthy, continue to get our reports from Vantage. I meet with Ms. Sandra and the mayor. We gather various reports as to what's coming, what the insurance carrier's taking in, what's being paid out, and that type of stuff. So, we keep a kind of monitor that all throughout the year. So, we kind of know, you know, when, what we're kind of gonna be looking at if we're looking at huge increases. Nine point eight really is not that bad. Anytime you can keep your insurance in the single digits, it's really a good thing. I just hate that four percent of that was just for Affordable Care Act fees, but, you know, again, there's no way around that. Any questions, comments, concerns? Well, thank y'all very much.
What do we?
We need to, they need to give you permission by adopting this resolution to sign the contract.
Okay. We're asking for permission to sign this contract.
May I make that motion?
We got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All four?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Ordinance fourteen twenty-two, fourteen forty-two twenty-two.
Twenty-four.
Yeah? No. Eleven.
Twelve.
Eleven.
Fourteen forty-two twenty-two.
Fourteen.
Fourteen twenty-two.
Forty-two twenty-two.
Okay. Okay. Ordinance fourteen forty-two twenty-two. To amend the Code of Ordinants and Zoning Code of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, for the purpose of prohibiting the placement of house trailers on specific roadways within the city and to provide for other matters related thereof. And I believe this is introductory only. Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And it follows a recommendation that this body received from the Bastrop Zoning and Development Commission regarding a change to the Bastrop zoning code. And so, it's for introduction. I've also emailed some supplements to the mayor and to the city clerk while we've been sitting here. And this statutorily has to set over for a month, and you cannot, cannot act on it until the next regular meeting of this body, which is in June. And we want to make sure to also, I would recommend to the city clerk that we set up a public hearing period. Perhaps we could set five forty-five or five thirty PM, immediately preceding the next council meeting as a public hearing time on this ordinance.
So, this is, like I said, this is only introductory only, so we'll just lay it over for a month?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And the public hearing will be published in the paper. We'll let you know what it is. Ordinance fourteen forty-two twenty-four. And ordinance amending ordinance, ordinance oh-seven forty-one twenty, to regulate non-storm water discharges into the storm drainage system of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, and to provide policies and procedures for the regulation thereof by enacting Code of Ordinance Section six dash ninety-five through six dash ninety-five point twenty-five of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Bastrop. Joe, Joe Fontanet, our sewer director?
This is for introduction purposes also, I believe, but this is in regards to the, it's an updating of the ordinance for the stormwater program, which would bring us up to date and put us in, in complete regulation with, with all the state and federal new regulations that are, that are coming down, and give us the abilities to be able to enforce the, the stuff out there where the current one has some loopholes in it, which we would be closing up, and this would enable us to do everything the correct and proper way and, and get everything done, needs to be done, basically.
Most people, I guess, don't realize that the city's actually on the federal order, on stormwater. That's why whenever you see anyone building anything, you will always know there's a black piece of plastic or something, look like it's just standing there. And that's actually to stop the stormwater from running dirt into the drainage systems. Even a car wash is governed by stormwater. Well, right now, this only put teeth in the city's enforcement part, but we've been regulated for, I know, the last eight years.
Something like that.
On the stormwater. Now, there are teeth in it, where we can be fined and also the violators can be fined.
Correct.
And that's what this is.
Yes.
And this is introductory only.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence, will we have to have a public hearing on this one?
I think it'd be a good idea, light of the penalties, I'm looking at back toward the end, to set it at the same time.
Okay. So, this will lay over for a month, too? Okay. Ordinance, you may come back. Ordinance fourteen forty-two twenty-five. And ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-ninety of nineteen eighty-one and eighty-eight dash thirty-four twenty-five of nineteen eighty-eight, regulating the use of sanitary sewer facilities serving the City of Bastrop.
Now, this one is for the upgrading of the pretreatment and sewer ordinance for the whole city. Now, this, the other one was stormwater, this is for sewer. And basically, this also brings it up to date and puts us in line with everything that needs to be done, puts a little bit more teeth in it, as you say, than, just like the other one, where if somebody's doing something wrong, we've got the capabilities of making changes that need to be done, and it's just, it's just time. I mean, it's been over twenty years since these have been updated, and they need, they need to be burnt up to snuff. And once again, this is for introduction purposes, and we'll be bringing it in next month.
And this also will be, it's also introduction, it will lay over for a month.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Discussion, bid, bids on rehabilitation of the wind cone and segmented circle of the Moore House Memorial Airport. Mr. Elton, airport manager.
Good evening, mayor and council. We've actually put out to bid for the project to relocate the wind cone at the airport, and M and Engineering had received the bids in, and the low bid that qualified was Y Electric. And so, we'd like to recommend that they be awarded the contract to do the work.
Okay. And the rehabilitation of the wind cone, what is the wind cone?
Wind cone, you might more commonly hear it referred to as a wind sock, and it's a large, kind of a conical-shaped wind measuring device, and it, pilots can look at it and tell what direction the wind's coming from, what speed it is, that sort of thing. So, it's a good visual reference for aircraft on the ground and in the sky.
Okay. And the bid was sixteen thousand six hundred seventy-eight?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And actually, the original grant amount was for twenty-four thousand, and there was an alternate bid for the segmented circle, and the state decided not to fund that alternate bid, so they're just gonna go with the base bid, which is moving the wind cone and tying its lighting into the runway lighting circuit. And so, we'll actually come in under the grant with the electrical contractor and the design and inspection from M and Engineering.
And this will be paid for by grant?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
There will be some tree clearing that we'll have to do, but we're looking at folding that into a little bit larger project where we're gonna be removing some other obstructions and stuff. But we're still planning all that out, and as we know more about it, we'll bring that to you in the future.
I'll make that motion, ma'am. We got a motion?
Seven.
And a second, also. Any discussion? All four?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Let's see, where am I at? Fifteen? Oh, we already did the... Just making sure it wasn't theirs. Discussion action, bids on property located at thirteen sixteen Bowman. Ms. Coleman?
Mayor and Alderman, this is the property that was donated to us a couple months back. Y'all declared it surplus last month, gives permission to advertise for bid. We did have one bidder, and it was to a Mary Benton. Her bid was six thousand five hundred dollars. So, we recommend that y'all consider accepting her bid.
Make that motion.
I second, ma'am, mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All four?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We have a couple more items that were, I guess, left off the agenda, and I said, could I get, and actually, it would be a local license and Mr. Montgomery, N L C E C, a discussion. Can I get a motion to expand their journey?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to expand their journey.
Second.
And a second. All four?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Mayor, council, I'd like to recommend that the Club Old School, I recommend for renewal their license, located nine twenty-four Luther Street. It's a Class B licensed retail dealer on premises. This is renewal.
Make that motion, ma'am. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All four?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, Mr. Montgomery? N L C E C. Could you come up to the mic, please?
Yes, Henry was supposed to make the technical presentation, but Henry being Henry. When I left, when I left the office minutes ago, he had two students there from Neville who were trying to raise their ACT score. He said, Henry, it's time for us to go on up there. Oh, they're not gonna, yo, you got plenty of time. Let me work with them just a few minutes longer, and I'll be on up. But nevertheless, what we're here is asking for support from the city as well as the school board. We're gonna be meeting with Dr. Napoleon on Monday concerning the National Career Readiness test. As you know, that the cities who most prepared are the ones who get the industry. What this certificate does, it allows our community, our parish, to be work-ready. We, there are only two parishes, Abors and Rapids Parish in the state of Louisiana that has that, a work-ready community. Louisiana is way, way, way behind in terms of having a qualified workforce. So, what we do at N L C E C is work with people in order to qualify them for the National Career Readiness Certificate. You can start it, you can get a bronze, gold, and a platinum level. Recently, we have worked with some of the people, trustees from the detention center. We have some who are qualified, and we have had as many as two hundred people to enroll in the class. However, many of them expect to get it within two or three weeks, but some of them, that's not even reasonable, because it's quite technical in terms of what you must know, the knowledge base, not counting your soft skills that must also be qualified. And so, many of them start, but they drop out. So, we get a clientele that comes off the street basically looking for a GED. Some of them dropped out of school, tenth grade, and come in and expecting two or three weeks they're gonna have their GED. That's not even reasonable. But nevertheless, we work with what we have, and we have qualified some who scored a gold or bronze certificate. But in order for the parish to progress and, and the city to progress, you're gonna have to create a viable workforce. And that entails spending some money that many people say we don't have, but we can't afford not to have it, because if we're gonna compete for jobs, I mean, for industry, from, that's gonna come into these various communities, they're gonna look for, are you ready for this industry to come into your town or in your city? So, when we undertook this task with N L C E C, one of the things it's lacking is a lack of community support. And that entails hiring a qualified staff and not people just coming in in the afternoons and working to get these people qualified in the workforce. So, what we're doing is soliciting the city, police jury, as well as the school board to help us, help our people, and to raise the level of readiness in terms of getting industry to be ready to have industry to come into this, this area. And the technical part of it, the Mill and Sterleton, that plant will not hire anybody unless they have a work-ready certificate. And it's gonna get even more technical, because most things now are very technical, and they expect to have a work-ready workforce in order for them to locate in an area. And we being one of the real parishes, we working at a disadvantage all the time in terms of trying to secure industry that, that are ready to locate here, but you don't have a qualified workforce. So, again, I apologize for my coworker, I thought he'd been here by nine... I thought he'd been here by now and expect to talk this long. But because he's not here, that's what we're soliciting from the corporation for this, from the city. Any questions?
Thank you, but if you get with your, comrade, would you give us a, what are you talking about, a mount or something like that?
We could do that.
Okay.
It just depends. We're going to come back because we want to hit the other two also.
Okay.
To help us, to help you. But we do want to be able to hire some qualified people and be able to pay them for the hours that they work. These will not be full-time employees. These will be people who would just come in and work at different hours to work with the program. We also talked to Ms. Lowdon at the Community College. We're going to be working directly with them when we get these people qualified. Now, we are able to test our people. We are not only able to teach, but we are able to test. And we have tested some already. But we're going to be working closely with the Community College. We'll come up with a figure after we meet with the other two groups.
Okay.
Any other questions?
And thank you, Mr. Montgomery, for informing us.
I'll really apologize for my apologies.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.